Good afternoon again. I want to apologize for the slight delay for the end of our executive session, but this is Board Chair Linda Chinia, and I'd like to welcome you to the Public Board Meeting of the Baltimore City Board of School Commissioners. Just a reminder to folks who are not speaking, to please mute your phone unless, until you need to speak publicly. First, I'm going to do a roll call to see the Commissioners who are present, and then just a reminder that I will be doing the same roll call for each of our votes. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank? Commissioner Frank?
Commissioner, Chinia said he'd be coming, joining late to this meeting.
Okay, Commissioner James Hassan?
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
Here.
Commissioner McFadden?
I'm here.
Commissioner Reed?
Present.
Commissioner Richardson? Commissioner? Roberts?
Present.
Okay. I'm here. We have Commissioner Richardson.
Here. I'm here.
Okay, so we have nine present, one absent at this point. Okay. Is there a motion to reopen the meeting?
So moved. McFadden.
Thank you. McFadden, okay, is there a second?
Second.
I heard Commissioner Lynn.
Thank you. I, I heard so many, I couldn't tell. All right, all those in favor. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, present.
Commissioner Brooks, are you in favor? Commissioner Brooks, are you in favor reopening the meeting? Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Commissioner Lynn?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor. So I have, anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? So I have nine and one absent. Is there a motion? To approve the prior open session minutes?
So moved, Richardson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Roberts.
Thank you. All those in favor. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks, are you back?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lynn? Okay, Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, I'm in favor. Anyone opposed? Abstaining? Okay, the motion carries of eight in favor, two absent. Is there a motion to approve the closed session summaries?
Move, Frank?
Commissioner Frank, is there a second?
Bondima.
Thank you. Okay. And all those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Oh, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes, yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. Is there, no one opposed and no abstentions, so that's nine in favor? Okay, thank you so much. I'm happy to announce that beginning at our next board meeting, we will be resuming public comment in the manner that we've done in the past. Members of the public who are interested in participating should indicate in your sign up by email whether you're, whether you're going to submit an email, whether you're going to submit a pre-recorded video, or if you're interested in speaking live. And for the folks who are interested in speaking live, you'll be receiving a return email with instructions on how to join the meeting. There'll be more details about this information included on our website and also with the meeting notices. And this evening, I might also like to recognize our retirees. These are those folks especially who have given over thirty years of service in the system. While we would love to have these folks in person and be in person to properly honor you, we still want to be certain that we acknowledge you. We will be mailing certificates to you, and so for this month, for the June observations, first I'd like to acknowledge Fake Dunlap for thirty-plus years of service. She started her employment with Baltimore City Schools on May the thirteenth, nineteen eighty-five, as a ten-month, eight-hour food service worker at Thurgood Marshall Middle School. She continued working and serving our school system, ending at Baltimore Polytechnic Institute and Western High School. She served Baltimore City Schools for thirty-five years. Willie Mae Thomas is another person with more than thirty years of service. She started her employment with Baltimore City Schools on April twenty-second, nineteen eighty-seven, as a ten-month non-instructional assistant at Harriet Tubman Elementary. She was promoted to a paraeducator in pre-K and was assigned to Tens Tillman, and ended her working, her work at Roller Park Elementary. She served Baltimore City Schools for thirty-three years and one month. And then Alonso Williams, who started his employment with Baltimore City Schools on July the ninth, nineteen eighty-seven, as a twelve-month custodial, custodial one for facilities in the southeast Cluster Four. He was later assigned to Facilities Northeast Cluster Three. He served locations that included Hartford Heights Elementary, Sharp-Ledden Hall. Mr. Williams served Baltimore City Schools for thirty-two years and one month. We want to congratulate all three of these folks. We hope that you will enjoy your retirement, and we thank you for the service that you rendered to our schools and to our families. At this time, I want to see if there is a motion to approve the Personnel Employment and Payroll, the PEP, in quasi-judicial matter.
So moved, James?
Thank you.
Second.
Commissioner Reed?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Bondima?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. There are no abstentions or opposed, so that nine, that motion passes. Nine in favor. Okay, I'm going to now review the consent agenda. Board colleagues, please let me know if you would like an item to be removed. Please, if you have an already stated question for the staff, so that we can, they can be prepared if, if you need to do a presentation. First is item six point zero one, clear request for delay of opening. Six point zero two waiver of charter application requirement. Six point zero three, new location request for Baltimore Collegiate School for Boys. Six point zero four, new location request, Clay Hill Public Charter School. Six point zero five, there's a request for this to be pulled, and it's the FY twenty quarter three budget amendment. This was for presentation, I understand.
Right.
There are specific questions?
It was just for presentation.
Thank you. Twelve point zero one, the College Board. Twelve point zero two, Baltimore School for the Arts.
Yes.
Okay, I heard, I heard, yes, can you tell what the question is here?
Yeah, it's just a question. So I was just looking at the data, and it says that in their demographic breakdown, that sixty-six percent of their teachers are white, and then around thirty percent are black, and then two percent Asian and two percent Latino. I'm wondering, is there any sort of ways in which they have planned to address that disparity?
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Rest of the staffing disparity?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Alrighty. Yes?
Can I pull twelve oh one, please?
Yes, what's your question?
My question's about the impact and the achievement gap.
Okay.
Thank you.
Twelve point zero three, occupational therapy services. Twelve point zero four, physical therapy services. Twelve point zero five, Mayor's Office of Employment Development.
Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Roberts. I like to pull twelve point zero five, just as a following, follow-up to the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting, yeah. Chief Pfeifer said that there was going to be an addendum to this procurement, and I wanted to see if that, if the addendum came to fruition, if, if that update is happening for this potential procurement.
Chantel, you broke up real bad. You want to say that again?
The question on the addendum?
Yes, yes, to the contract with the Office of MOED.
Okay.
Could you hear me, John, Commissioner Richardson?
I couldn't, I didn't. You broke up on my end. Maybe it's my, my internet. What did you, what was the question?
The question was a follow-up to the last Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. There was an addendum to be added to this particular procurement, and I wanted to see if that had been updated.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Twelve point zero six, the Crisis Prevention Institute Incorporated. Twelve point zero seven, Maryland Coalition for Inclusive Education. Twelve point zero eight, Baltimore Curriculum Project. Twelve point zero nine, Improving Education. Twelve point ten, Baltimore Urban League, Baltimore Urban Debate, sorry. Twelve point eleven, Institute for Multisensory Education. Twelve point twelve, Polistic Life Foundation. Twelve point thirteen, Voyager Socus. Twelve, fourteen point zero one, the Daily Computer Incorporated. Fourteen point zero two, T-Mobile USA Incorporated. Fifteen point zero one, MFS Supply Incorporated. Fifteen point zero two, Image Three-Six Feet Baltimore. Sixteen point zero one, BKL and Associates. Sixteen point zero two, there's a request for this to be pulled, Towson University.
Yes, this is Bondima, and I asked that to be pulled. We talked about it in the Teaching and Learning, and it's a couple of other questions I want to ask in reference to the process of obtaining a contract or partnership with Towson University.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so currently the ones that I have listed are six point zero five, twelve point zero one, twelve point zero two, twelve point zero five, and sixteen point zero two.
Yeah.
Thank you. Was there someone speaking? We're going to move to the public comment. Speakers for recognized groups will have the opportunity to speak for five minutes, and then the board exec will then read the first ten emails or video messages that we have received for public comment.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
I'm sorry, I was on mute. Twelve point zero six, I have a question for the Crisis Prevention Institute.
Yes?
And the question is, in addition to the de-escalation services, are they specific to gender and sexuality-based issues, specifically around bullying and harassment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. I believe I was introducing Zach Taylor, representing the Baltimore Teachers Union. Mr. Taylor?
Hi, good evening. So just start by acknowledging, just, you know, again, the unique work we're facing, and just the huge amount of decisions that have to be made with regard to Phase Two and Phase Three, and just the Baltimore Teachers Union and our seven thousand members. You know, everyone's really looking forward to having a collective voice in this process as the work stream committees get off the ground, and we look forward to participating in these and sharing kind of our collective knowledge of one hundred and seventy schools. You know, we really think that our participation can help make these plans better and thoughtful, and really have a voice for not just educators, but just all of the students that we've continued to be in touch with and families. And even in light of this whole situation, a lot of us have been able to see some of the students recently at protests or marches, and, you know, maintaining social distance, but it's been really invigorating for, for educators to be able to connect on, on issues that really matter to our students and to our communities. And so, thinking about issues in a Broadway for next year, want to kind of reiterate something that we talked about last week at the Teaching and Learning Committee, and I believe the President of the BTU sent Board Commissioners and some district leadership today, and that's just regarding the policies on unannounced formal observations in the instructional framework. You know, we recognize that there's just a ton of uncertainty next year. Pretty much any question you could ask still has a question mark next to it, and all of that makes a lot of sense. And it's for these reasons that we're just asking for kind of a common sense measure to delay the implementation of these policies for an additional school year, just so that we can remain focused on how to maintain healthy and safe learning environments for our students and staff, and also just how to really like leverage these unique circumstances for the best educational opportunities our students can have. So I just want to emphasize, you know, these are not simple policies or tools. They're not things that you can just like take out of the box and implement, and they weren't designed to take into account social distancing in schools. And they weren't designed for any sort of hybrid model where we have some students in school and some students out. There's so much we don't know about next year. You know, we don't know how many students are going to be in the room. We don't know if we're going to be able to have regular group work where students are sitting next to each other. That, that seems unlikely. We don't know if teachers are going to be able to sit next to their students or to lean over a shoulder and to assist with a problem. We don't think from guidance we've seen, we can even hand directly items to students. There has to be a procedure and a policy for all of these things. Every physical movement in the classroom is going to slow down. And so, with all these looming questions, we really want administrators to be focused on how to create and maintain physically safe, healthy learning environments, and we want teachers really not to have to worry about these new things too. There's going to be so much that's new. We want them to stay focused on the new things that are really necessary for next year. I will say that throughout this year, we've, you know, we've been a good faith participant in all of these work groups. We've been part of information sessions. We've received a lot of clarification, but we've also kind of seen how much these are still works in progress. And with our current circumstances, you know, we've asked for a broad range of resources, including content-specific guidance, qualified, for qualified observers for certain content areas. We've asked for clarifications on various aspects of the evaluation cycle, and these resources, for the most part, are still in the early stages. Work groups have only recently convened for the content look-for's and our requests for video examples and exemplars to share with teachers and really guide professional development. These have only been very partially developed. We don't have them across a range of effectiveness of content areas of grade levels, and that's a big concern to us. We were really looking forward to using these for professional development. We have concerns about just the recertification process of qualified observers. You know, we want to make sure that we are having high expectations for qualified observers, and that when it comes to training and recertifying qualified observers, that there's an element of biased training. We know that anytime there's an observation structure, implicit bias plays a role. Race, gender, class backgrounds of teachers and, and of students all affect observation outcomes, and we just want to see this addressed. We want it to be part of the training. So there's a lot here. We hope that you consider this. You know, it's a big conversation with two important policies, so we invite questions whether here or in other forums, and we hope we can talk about that as we consider next year.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Taylor. Next is Sheila Bishop, I'm sorry, Sheila Phillips. I know it's Sheila Bishop, I apologize for that. Ms. Phillips is representing the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee, CCAT. I want to also recognize and acknowledge the tremendous work that Ms. Phillips has done as she, this is her last year in her meeting as, as the Chair of CCAT. Thank you for, for your advocacy, for this important group of, of students that we have. And Ms. Phillips, you're invited to make a public comment at this time.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. During the time of the pandemic, it's been strange enough, we were able to continue our monthly meetings. April, May, and June was virtual meetings with quite a bit of participants, parents, and community members, and staff from the district office. I want to thank them again for assisting me and making sure that the information that the parents need still was available through CCAT. I got a letter written so I could stay on point. Good evening, Dr. Santalise, Madam Chair, and the entire school board of Baltimore City. Good evening to the listening audience. I am presenting a brief report of the school year, of this activity and progress. The CCAT Board developed a slogan in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, which stated that we was going to have a goal in mind to connect, collaborate, and communicate throughout the community, not realizing the pandemic was going to happen. But anyway, the community consisted of not, and not limited to, parents, schools, principals, students, healthcare workers, the BTU, PTA. We also networked with agencies such as DDA, Doors, Parent Place of Maryland, St. Peter's Adult Learning Center, Community Advocates for You, Citywide, DDA Council for Baltimore City, and the CSEC, which is part of the State of Maryland Department of Education. We have had, been at many town hall meetings with Dr. Santalise, back-to-school nights throughout the city, the PTA, the PTO meetings. We also attended and supported Partners for Success, which is managed by Ms. Michelle Graham Thornton. We also had an opportunity to attend the Special Education Institute, and was able to collaborate and give CCAT's point of view of the whole, entire institute process. We have increased our membership with parents, teachers, principals, community coordinators, parents, educators. I have been a CCAT Chair since two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year, up until now. This is my last year as the Chair, and has been, it's been a wonderful experience and a great opportunity to serve in this office. I am forever humbled at the opportunity, and the work does continue. Thanks again for everyone's support. I am very appreciative to Dr. Brooks, who's the Executive Director of Special Education, and her staff, who always has assisted us. I would like to thank the Executive Board of CCAT for their diligence and everything we had to accomplish. I am always in your service. Thank you so much. The excellent Chair for Baltimore City CCAT. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Phillips, and I think that the work that you did really highlighted what you said about the connecting, collaborating, and communicating, and you were, you were an excellent Chair, and we're going to miss you. I know we'll see you, we'll still be an advocate, but we will miss you in that role.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to now turn it over to our board execs for additional public comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one public comment signed up from Rebecca Yanaway of the Teachers Democracy Project. And I will start. Even if restrictions on school are lifted and safety precautions are in place, there are teachers and parents who will not be able already, able or ready to return to school in the fall. In a sobering article from the New York Times, we learned that about six in ten parents say they will not send their kids back to school. One in five teachers will not return. We'd like to propose three scenarios that we think could help head off a decline in enrollment, reduce the number of school, students in the physical school, and meet the needs of those who are, who, those who have medical concerns. Option one, all-distance learning. This will address several needs. The needs of families who are relying on older children to watch younger children, those who are not comfortable returning to school without a vaccine, teachers, students, and families who are especially at risk to COVID. Overall, it seems distance learning is much less effective than classroom learning. There's one scenario, however, where we have at least anecdotally heard some benefit. One teacher who serves a significant number of students with IEPs reported that in addition to providing online assignments, he provides a half hour to an hour one-on-one over the phone with the students at least once per week. According to at least one child's parents, these conversations have resulted in significant, in more significant growth than what was seen during the regular school year. The parents decidedly prefer this kind of instruction. Option two, hybrid of distance and in-person learning. A hybrid option with a combination of online and face-to-face in the classroom would be good for meeting the needs of younger children who largely struggle to connect online, and for others who have not responded well to online learning. Though it is likely that some of those who are less engaged in online learning are also struggling with life challenges right now. It also seems that there are some students who just don't do well with the online medium. This seems to be about personality. We heard from one parent with twins that one child, one child likes online learning and the other doesn't. We have heard that some previously engaged students just aren't motivated to participate right now. Option three, all in person. This model may be essential for some families where there is no adult caregiver who can stay home, where students have shown a major loss of learning, face danger, unsolved food insecurity issues, and where trauma may require some face-to-face learning. And that was the only public comment.
Thank you. And, and thank you for that, and again, I'm going to, I will remind folks that the document from MSDE is online. If you'd also like to look at some of the recommendations that they've made that school systems are working, are working with. Now, back to the board members. Based on the public comment, are there any additional items? Now, back to the board members. Based on the public comment, are there any additional items that any board members would like to pull other than the ones that we've already identified? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved Richardson.
Second, James.
Oh, James, okay.
And second, James, okay. Okay, all those in favor? Commissioner Bondimi?
Yes, please, yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. No one's opposed or abstaining, so that's nine in favor. And those items do pass. Now, we have items that we need to go back and take a look at. So we'll start with, sorry, got to go back to my notes here. Item 6.05, the budget amendment.
Okay, this is Mary Ann Cox, the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, and I'll be presenting the FY 20 Quarter Three Budget Amendment Request for Board Review and Approval. This, these budget amendments are presented to the Board for review and approval four times a year on a quarterly basis. The budget amendment requests include those budget amendments that have been submitted by the schools and central office locations, as well as supplemental appropriations that may have been either currently or previously approved by the Board in a separate transaction. So for this FY 20 Quarter Three, the budget amendments, a budget amendments is a request to transfer budget dollars between state categories and objects, generally within the same department. This is for information purposes as well as some financial reporting requirements. So the supplemental appropriations that are noted within this quarterly is the supplemental appropriation for Baltimore Curriculum Project relating to the Collington Square. When Collington Square was no longer operating as a charter school for a Baltimore Curriculum Project, and it became, it came to be operated as a traditional school again. Money was provided by the Baltimore Curriculum Project that they had received over the years and was unspent for Collington Square, and they returned that to city schools for use by that particular school. So this is the last remaining balance. And the principal had made a request to this CIO for permission to use it in a particular fashion, and that's what this request relates to. It's pulling that money from assigned fund balance. And the supplemental appropriation for the state of Maryland Teacher Salary Incentive Grant relating to Senate Bill 1030 for the 8.4 million, that had been approved by the Board in a, as a supplemental in a previous board meeting. So in terms of the category amendments, generally, we discuss the largest, more significant budget amendments to explain the flow of money from one category to another. The first one noted here was administration decreased by 0.5 million and operational plant increased by 0.5 million, and that was for funds needed for the emergency cleaning supplies relating to COVID. The second one is talking about is the cash out of social workers and psychologists. So there was a decrease of student personnel services by 0.4 million. Instruction decreased by 0.6 million and special ed increased by 1.0 million. And that effectively related to those positions that were held for social workers and psychologists that could not be filled, such that city schools needed to go to outside contractors to secure those services. And then there was another budget amendment process for cash out of students with disability positions so that the monies could be used for other items. So special education increased by 1.5 million and benefits decreased by 1.5 million. So on the next page, all right, next page, please. The state of Maryland Teacher Salary Incentive Grant, this was the funding, additional funding that we got for the general fund related to Senate Bill 1030. The instruction budget increased by 6.7 million and special education increased by 1.7 million. Also, city schools reallocated funding. Administration decreased by 1.3 million and fixed charges decreased by 3 million to provide 4.3 million in instruction to purchase Chromebooks for distance learning due to the COVID-19 response. The last item here for the category where funds needed for the enterprise lease payments. This is where city schools arrange for a contract with enterprise leasing services for vehicles. These would be for vehicles, for school police, for operations, and for food services. Our vehicles were quite aged, many 10 years or older, and they required a lot of maintenance, so that we engaged in this leasing program with enterprise. And so we will receive updated vehicles for use by our various departments. Okay, the next screen merely shows the, the column to the far right. Sorry, go back one, thank you. Go back another one. Back two more. Okay, there's a slide right in front of this that is school and central office summary by category. And those relate to the increases and decreases which I just discussed. And then we also present our category amendments by central office versus schools. And you can see in the schools, the schools overall increased by $9.4 million, of which 8.4 million was related to the Teacher Salary Incentive Grant. And then the rest of the difference was, you know, the addition of 4.3 for Chromebooks and taking out the adjustments for the special ed reclassification. What happens is we have positions at the school for special ed, but when we, when those positions cannot be filled, the contractual services are handled through the central office. So the money has to come back to the central office so that we can pay for the contractual services for the psychologists and social workers like we had discussed earlier. Okay, so if we could go to the bullets on the object amendments. Okay, these are the largest of the object amendments. The, because of the state of Maryland Teacher Salary Incentive Grant, salary and wages increased by 8.4 million. So that was money directly from the state. Additional money that was not included in our original budget. Then the next one is the transfer of students with disability positions to the central office. This has to do with the unfilled positions that are at the schools that we have to pull the money back to central office so that we can arrange for staffing contractors to provide the needed services. So you can see here that salaries and wages decreased by 6.6 million and other charges increased by 2.6 and contractual services increased by 4. So a lot of this, these are a lot of ins and outs of the various transactions that relate to this process to transfer money from the schools back to central office so that we can arrange for required services, generally related services through contractors. So the cash out of the students with disability positions, again, that's the same thing. The salary and wages increased by 1.5 and fringe benefits decreased by 1.5. This, these are all related to the various transactions that we need to do to pull the money back to the central office to allow us to purchase them outside. The next one is funds moved to purchase Chromebooks for distance learning due to COVID-19. So fringe benefits decreased by 3 million, contingency reserve decreased by 2 million, and supplies and materials increased by 5 million. So that would have been a net $5 million in additional Chromebooks due to the COVID-19 response for distance learning. And the last object amendment noted here again is the money that was required to be reallocated for the enterprise leasing contract. So the equipment increased by 0.5 million and the source of it was the contingency reserve, which we decreased by 0.5 million. So once again, we have the summary, the 8.5 million, which is the total increase, and that's the sum of the supplemental appropriations that are included within this request. So 8.4 million of it was the Teacher Salary Incentive Grant, and there was the additional money, about 125,000 for the supplemental related to Collington Square. So again, we have the transfer of money in and out between central office and schools. And generally, we don't transfer money from the schools back to central office, but this reallocation of the student with disability money to pull the money back to central office to allow us to purchase the contractual services is one of the exceptions to that rule. So these are presented for Board Review and Approval. Are there any questions? Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve this item?
Move approval, Frank?
Okay. Is, is a second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. All those in favor? Commissioner Bondimi? Commissioner Bondimi, are you in favor of approving item 6.05? Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner James Hassan?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
I'm in favor. Anyone abstaining?
This is Bondimi with cutoff.
Okay, are you in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Brooks, are you voting?
Yes, it's hard to hear.
Okay, are you in favor of approving item 6.05?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no one opposed, no abstentions, so this item passes. Vote of 9, 0. The next item is 12.01 College Board. I think the question was around the impact and the achievement gap, addressing the achievement gap.
This is Rachel Pfeifer, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. So part of the effort that we have put in place to address the achievement gap for our students is having School Day SAT so that we are able to ensure that all students get the opportunity to take the test, both in the spring of their junior year and in the fall of their senior year. We were unable to have the spring test this year because of COVID, but this, this particular procurement item would allow us to be on track to have the fall test available to students, our seniors this year. We continue to think through how we support improvements in student performance on the test. We're actually currently discussing summer opportunities for students to be able to improve on the SAT. We have supported schools in using Khan Academy, which provides free SAT preparation that's aligned with specific student needs. They essentially look at an individual student's test and support them in gaining skills in the areas they need the most work. So this is ongoing work for us, but we are committed to ensuring that our students have equal access to take the test, that they are able to get access to preparation, no matter where they start for the test. And this is continued work for us. Thank you for highlighting it.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
Can I follow?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I guess the reason I asked the question was, one, I looked at the impact moving from 10th grade to 11th grade. Baltimore City school kids improved by 10 to 15 points. Then I look at the other school districts nationally. Their increases tend to be a fair amount more. Then I looked at the differential in reading and math, 10th grade. The differential reading and math 10th grade for reading was 80 points and for math it was 60 points. And then when I go to the 11th grade, it becomes 100 points. So it looks like, I don't know if that's in terms of racial inequities or summer transitions, but it looks like the differential increases between 10th grade and 11th grade between Baltimore City school kids and kids in Maryland schools and nationally. And I was wondering whether the programs we have in place are really doing a job of increasing the scores, and especially in light of the mean scores having gone up in three years.
Yeah, I appreciate that point. So part of what you see reflected here is that the content on the SAT is is aligning to what students are learning up through Algebra II. And so depending on when our students are taking Algebra II compared to when other students may be taking it, they may not be getting that content at the same time that other students are. I think there's also just continued work that we're doing with our colleagues in the Office of Teaching and Learning just as we support their efforts for students to take Algebra in 8th grade and starting that math course sequence, bumping it a little bit earlier so that students are able to get some of the content that is on the SAT in their 10th grade year as opposed to getting it in their 11th or 12th grade year. So I think that maybe some of what you're seeing there in terms of the gaps widening is how, at what point students are getting the content needed for the test.
Okay, any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve this request for College Board?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Reed, is there a second?
Second, McFadden.
McFadden, okay. Those in favor? Commissioner Bondimi?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
I'm going to be voting to oppose.
Okay, Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm in favor, those opposed? Commissioner James Hassan, you said you're voting to oppose?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, okay. And no abstentions, so this item, motion passes. We have eight in favor, one opposed. The next item is 12.02 Baltimore School. The question was around addressing the staffing disparities.
Oh, I see Principal Ford is actually here.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, I will defer to you then because I was going to say we would get back to them with foundation. This is the nation.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Santa Lysus, members of the school board. Chief Collins. And BSA recognizes the fundamental need to provide a part-time arts faculty that represents and reflects the demographics of our community and our students. When positions open, we make sincere efforts to search out black candidates. We do this by reaching out to partners like Dr. Eric Conway at Morgan State for recommendations, as well as consulting with black educators on our staff. We believe black teachers are a value for our school, so we make that a priority. We've noted that progress has been made, particularly with respect to arts leadership. Currently, 60% of our arts leaders are black, and I'm very proud that we've made that progress.
Commissioner Brooks, I mean, you had the initial question. You have any additional questions or anyone else?
Yes, so this is Commissioner Brooks, so, so thank you for that. And I also agree that black teachers are, you know, incredibly important to our, our learning of our students and creating climates that are productive. I was also referring to the fact that there was only 2% Latino and 2% Asian folks there. And so it looks like, for example, if we took black folks, so it's there's at least, you know, half of what, you know, a quarter of the, the folks that you had there, but you only have 2% Latino or Latinx folks and Asian American folks or Asian folks. So, so thank you for noticing the need for black teachers, but I'm also interested in the disparity between the fact that there's 60%, 66% white teachers when there's only 2% Latino and Asian American folks. So what initiatives have been made to address that disparity?
Our, our arts leaders are primarily responsible for hiring the part-time art staff, and they search out a diverse core to do this. We are, we're looking locally exclusively because these are positions that may be one hour, they may be four hours, they may be six hours over the course of a week, paying between 30 and 45 dollars. So that makes the, the job a little bit tougher. That doesn't make it any less important, of course, but we don't have a particular initiative regarding Latinx and Asian artists. But we do value the, the need for diversity.
Great, thank you so much, and I really appreciate that. And I would hope that as you move forward, that actually for the district-wide initiatives, whatever we do and whoever we sponsor, that we would be paying close attention to sort of the, the teacher demographics and making sure that they are representative of our students, all of our students and all of their needs.
I just want, I want to thank Principal Ford and also, you know, Commissioner Brooks, just thank you for that. And we too have noticed district-wide as the growth of our Latinx population continues to soar. It has, across the district, put a, a need for an increased focus on the recruitment and retention of our Latino. So we are absolutely working on that and, you know, to your point, it's, it's not just about one group, it's about making sure we, you know, we, we are actively recruiting teachers, educators who reflect our student population. And so I just wanted to add on because the recruitment that is occurring at BSA also takes place in a larger context of efforts across the district. So thank you for that.
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Santa Lysus.
May I? May I have one? May I, may I add one quick comment? This is Chris.
Go ahead.
I wanted to note that Baltimore City Public Schools got a nice national note on Sunday. There was a story about our photography teacher, who's one of the people paid for by this money, designing a outdoor prom shoot for, prom photo shoot for our students, picked up by local news organizations, including YPR, and it ended up on Weekend Edition nationally on Sunday morning. So I thought that was a nice note about Baltimore City and the students of Baltimore City.
Thank you.
Board Chair, this is Commissioner Lynn.
Go ahead, Commissioner Lynn.
Thank you. I just, along with Commissioner Brooks's statement, I also wanted to kind of ask a question regarding implicit bias with the Caucasian community of teachers at BSA. Because I have noticed and I've gotten, you know, multiple emails about, from students that attend BSA that they are seeing the disparities and the treatment of difference between them and their white counterparts within the school. So I just wanted to ask a question to Mr. Ford about how intense the implicit bias for these teachers are. And, you know, what does that look like for them? And are there, have there been any, you know, resolved of any disparities between students, black students and white teachers within the school?
Thank you for the question. Two years ago, we began a partnership with Stage Wellness, who created a and performed a equity audit for our school, including students, parents, staff members, board members, our board members. At the conclusion of that report, we shared that out and we began professional development over the course of last year, or this year, I suppose you might say. Of course, that was interrupted by closure for COVID-19, but we certainly intend to continue that moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. There are no other questions? Is there a motion to approve item 12.02 Baltimore School for the Arts?
So moved, Brooks.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second Richardson.
Okay, Richardson, I heard. Those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Yes.
McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Uh, I'm in favor. Okay, so that's, no one opposed, no abstentions, that's nine in favor. So this motion passes. Thank you. The next item that was pulled was 15, I'm sorry, 12.05, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, and it was a question around an addendum to the contract.
Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, for that question. This is Rachel Pfeifer, Executive Director of College and Career Readiness. We, in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, recognize the need for curriculum for students to use as they do youth works virtually this year, this summer. So as a result, we decreased the number of participants that we
I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Pfeifer?
Yeah.
Do you all hear like a
Someone needs to mute their phone. Someone needs to mute their phone. They're having a conversation right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'll start from the beginning. As a result of transitioning youth works to a virtual setting for this summer, we, in partnership with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, recognize the need for a curriculum for students to be able to use online as part of the work that they're doing. We, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development found a strong career readiness curriculum that we had the opportunity to review and vet and, and to work with them to shape to be more tailored for the Baltimore context. And what you see in this procurement item is $25,000 for that online curriculum. In order to fund that online curriculum, we reduced the number of students that the district office paid for, for youth works by six. So it would have previously been 60 students. You'll see now it's 54. When you take the student wages, the Social Security, Medicare, workers' comp that would have been taken out, that allowed us to have the $25,000 for the curriculum. So that's the update, it was included, and thanks for giving me the chance to highlight that.
Absolutely, thank you. One other area that I wanted to highlight was around the procurement letter where it said that city schools would maintain, if city schools maintained a virtual status over the summer, that we will only compensate MOED for the students who are able to be placed in virtual positions. Dr. Pfeifer, can you speak to the intentionality around planning for maximizing that opportunity for those 54 students? So essentially, that we are going to employ 54 students. And my rationale or my reasoning around that is there are so many parents, there are so many youth concerned about employment for the summer, and I would like to see us fill those 54 spaces.
Yes, so right now, the plan is to work with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development for these students to get access to this career readiness curriculum. So what they would do is that they would work through the curriculum, they would have an adult coach who would work with them and small groups of students throughout the day to provide guidance, give them some time for independent work, they'd do some group work, they'd come back and share together. And so we will, all 54 of those students will have meaningful work and career preparation this summer.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Pfeifer.
Thank you for the question.
Are there any other questions? If not, is there, is there a motion to accept this item, which is the Mayor's Office of Employment, 12.05?
Uh, Commissioner Roberts, so moved.
Okay, is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
James Hassan?
Yes.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yeah.
I'm in favor. No one opposed, no abstentions, so this item is approved, nine, zero. The next item was 12.06 Crisis Prevention Institute. There was a question around things, services, or addressing bullying and harassment?
So, good evening. This is Deborah Brooks, the Executive Director of Special Education. This de-escalation training is a trauma-sensitive prevention, de-escalation-focused training. It does focus on appropriate de-escalation strategies for adults when interacting with students that may be exhibiting behaviors that are harmful to their self or others. Once de-escalated, then students and staff are able to then discuss what the root cause of that behavior is, because it does have a trauma-sensitive focus to include harassment and bullying. And once we have identified those root causes, we are then able to refer those students to the appropriate support staff, i.e. the school counselor, school social worker, and/or school psychologist where appropriate.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks.
Did you have, you have additional questions?
Yeah, I just have, so, so one of the things that I'm interested in is so the explanation was just, you know, spot on, so I thank you for that. One of the things that I'm concerned about is given that we have such high numbers of harassment and we have not broken down by whether that harassment is around gender or sexuality-based issues, clearly that's all tied up in trauma, trauma for the student who's experiencing it, and then also trauma for the person who's in it. So when they're doing these de-escalation strategies, are they, one, documenting that? Two, is it something that is easily categorically disaggregated? So what, we can see the impact of the de-escalation based on categories of dispute? And then three, taking into account what's happening in terms of the context, what support services goes to the person that's impacted on the other end of, of, of the harassment or bullying or whatnot?
So that information we would glean from then those support staff. So once the student has been de-escalated appropriately by those that have been trained in the de-escalation, then meeting with the support staff to actually discuss the root cause. So for instance, if there's a student that was displaying a behavior that may be harmful to himself or others and de-escalating the student in an appropriate way, then connecting that student with the support staff, the school counselor, the school social worker, and/or the school psychologist, then getting that additional information from one of those support staff to be able then to see how many of these students that, once they are de-escalated and finding out the root cause was then harassment, and what that harassment is connected to, or bullying, and what that bullying is connected to. So what I can do is get with those support staff to see what those numbers and those categorical areas actually are and provide that information to you.
Awesome, I would really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So is there a motion to approve this item, the Crisis Prevention Institute?
Yes, so moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Brooks, the second?
Second, Commissioner James.
Commissioner James, okay, are those in favor? Commissioner Bondima?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Frank? Okay. James Hassan?
Yes.
Uh, McFadden?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes. Yeah.
Roberts?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Frank, are you voting? Are you opposed or abstaining?
Yes, yes.
Opposed or abstaining?
Yes, favor.
Oh, you're, you're a yes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, so this motion also passes, nine, uh, zero. The last item that was pulled was 16.02 Towson University, question around the process.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Chenya. I, we, this, this was brought up in our Teaching and Learning Committee. And I'm not sure if I got enough information. I'm more, I'm interested in getting more information about the process that we go through when we contract or partner with other universities or schools. We have a summer program going on at Towson University. I've had several calls and emails in reference to just information as to how, what do we do, what is the process that we use to partner with schools? And my concern is that we have board members, staff members, students who transferred to schools like Coppin, Morgan State University, teachers, and we would, you know, there are programs going on at all the schools, and, and these student schools are urban universities. And I'm just wondering, what is it that we do to make sure that we are taking advantage of these schools or universities? And what is the process that we apply in order to partner with these schools?
I'm gonna open this as staff response.
Excuse me?
Hi.
I'm waiting for, yeah.
Hi, this is Jeremy Grant Skinner. I think Roxanne For may be here, may be here also, and if she is, she may have more to add. Commissioner Bondimi, thank you. I will say that in response to a request from the board last year, when this, when this was approved for one year, we did, we did make more clear in the letter to the board that this is really a continuation of tuition reimbursement that is already in effect for any college or university. So it is, although it is framed as payment to Towson University, I do just want to start by saying that, you know, it is paying for courses at, in the same percentage that we pay for tuition reimbursement, for staff members who attend classes and complete them anywhere. What happened in this case is that while several local universities actually approached us with ideas about how they might provide a city school-specific series of courses, Towson University is the one, the one institution of higher education that completed that work to present a series of city school-specific courses that they wanted to offer to a cohort, and, and that's what's represented here. You know, generally, we actually are not, you know, select, selecting one university over another, and, and we don't guide people toward one university or another, but that's, that's the background of how Towson began offering this cohort program.
Well, can I, could you, you mind if I make a recommendation? I think it would be a great idea that, and I, I understand what you just said, it would be a great idea, at some point during the, the year or the semester, we can get together with all the universities and have a conversation and to let them know, and I'm, you might have already done this, to give them an idea of your needs here, our needs at Baltimore City Public Schools, so that each of the schools can have an opportunity to create or develop programs that would comply with our rules and regulations or our curriculum for our teachers and most, for our teachers doing summer programs or weekend programs, online programs. And because the School of Education Urban Studies at Morgan is very far in advance on, out on distant learning, and it would be, it, it would be great if we could have that discussion, because if any of these schools, and it might be Towson, Loyola, Coppin, Morgan, they can have the opportunity to, to enjoy some of these opportunities of working with our teachers. And I think that we should open that door so we can give everybody an opportunity to work with our teachers or our staff. So I just needed to know, and I'm, so I can answer some of the questions that, that people asked me in the community, and, and many times it's teachers that email me and ask questions, I just want to have some of the answers. And if, if, if our, if we don't meet, if those universities do not meet our requirements, then we can't give them the contract. But I think we want to let all of them know what our needs are, so that they all can have an opportunity to take advantage of it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. And I will just, I will just, excuse me?
I, this is Commissioner James. May I ask a question as well?
Go ahead.
Okay. Chief Grant Skinner, should we be looking at this as a no-bid contract? Or did it go out as an RFP to all institutions, Bowie, Coppin, Morgan, UB, Towson, Goucher?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think it should be seen as a no-bid contract, because we are not paying anything other than what our union agreements require us to pay. So we're actually just paying them the same amount that we would normally pay through the employee, through tuition reimbursement.
So then why are we seeing this as a board-level conversation?
We're seeing it is that it is providing the payment directly to the university instead of through the employee. And I think in the future, I don't anticipate that you would see these, because we've been in conversations with other universities and our finance office about following or implementing a direct billing practice for tuition reimbursement across other universities and colleges, and, and at Towson for other programs that aren't covered here.
Okay, and, and I will say this is actually probably a credit to your department. When I was the Director of Graduate Programs at Towson, they made a fairly explicit decision that they were no longer going to work with city schools because of the reimbursement challenges. So I think it's great that we're getting streamlined reimbursement. The way this shows up as a package, however, looks as if we are prioritizing one institution over others. And that's a challenge, especially in the conversations of recruiting and retaining teachers that demographically and historically match our students, and, and pieces like that.
Okay.
So thank, thank you for getting the system in place to do reimbursement directly. But then to Commissioner Bondimi's conversation, the onus of responsibility is on us at Morgan to get together a program and recruit students that can be directly reimbursed, rather than looking at this as like a kind, a procurement item. Correct?
And I would add, I would add Hopkins, and Coppin, and Loyola, and Notre Dame, and all the others.
Yes, I miss Loyola, Notre. I started running the litany of universities that have programs at May, but, but I, I appreciate the work to, to in, include more of our local higher ed communities. And so, Dr. Bondimi, you and I, we've got some work to do to get Morgan to be ready to, to step up and offer this sort of graduate opportunities.
Yes, and I also have one other question or recommendation. Could you please?
Commissioner Bondimi, I'm just cognizant of time and, and the other activity that we are, that we adjusted for. Could we, could I ask that the additional recommendations we could send in writing to, to staff, and we'll be certain that they get them? But we have, we have a few more agenda items that I want to make sure we do, and we, we are, we are attempting to get to the six o'clock time for the citywide graduation.
Okay.
Okay. Is, is there a motion to accept this particular item, 16.02?
So moved. Brooks?
Thank you. Second?
Second, Richardson.
Thank you. Those in favor? Commissioner Bondimi?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Frank?
Yes.
Commissioner James Hassan?
Abstain.
Commissioner McFadden?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And I'm in favor. So we have two abstentions. We have seven in favor, two abstentions, so this item is, is also approved. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for, for the, I think we are moving to information and discussion, and we have an item, presentation on a program renewal for the Dr. Angela Davis Leadership Academy.
Good evening. I'm Angela Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of New Initiatives.
This is Trevor Roberts. I'm a specialist in the Office of New Initiatives.
So the Youth Ambassador Leadership Academy is an organization that the district has worked with. They provide services to our overage population. In school year 2017, they actually applied to open a standalone school to support overage and underaccredited students. As a result of that process, the advisory board did not feel like they were ready to open a school, but recommended to the CEO that we look at partnering with them to establish a pilot program, and with a focus on overage and underaccredited middle school students. And so we worked with them to do that. That program opened in school year 2018, 19. Their focus is on accelerating academic program for those students, providing social, emotional supports to help students develop the skills and abilities to overcome some of the challenges that could impede students on their path to high school, college, and career. Additionally, they do character development work. They pair students with mentors. They have coaches for students. They do house visits. They have a number of wraparound services. Last year, the schools, you know, named after Dr. Davis, and students got to go visit her last year at a conference, which they shared with the board. This is a unusual, this is our first time doing a pilot program that had an operator. And so, you know, we've just been sort of in this one-year kind of contract. We want to get it more in line with a, a review process. It's still sort of in the startup phases, so we're recommending that the board allow us to grant an additional two-year term to enter into an agreement with them. They are meeting a need that we have in terms of, we have a significant number of students who are overaged. We are doing a mini kind of review with them now, but this will put us on a cycle to do a more formal review, and we'll have more data to understand the efficacy of the program over time.
Are there any questions?
No, I was just wondering, so this is Commissioner Brooks, and thank you, Angela, for the presentation. Just looking for any data points that we had, but it sounds like we'll have, we'll know better or know more later.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And this will come to the board for actual vote when?
This will come back to the board in July, for the meeting in July.
Okay, okay. Thank you. No other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Santalisa for the CEO comments and updates.
Thank you very much, Board Chair Chinna. First, I'd like to invite Chief Grant Skinner for tonight's PEP Agenda, but before I do that, the budget projection presentation is coming subsequent to this, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to invite Chief Grant Skinner, please, for tonight's PEP Agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisa. Good evening again, Board Commissioners. Normally, this is an opportunity where we get to cheer for lots of people who are being appointed to new positions, and I know that we do not get to do that in the same way virtually. And still, I'm pleased to announce a couple dozen appointments this evening. First, Lauren DeResta Stazio, Educational Associate, is appointed MTSS Liaison effective July 1st. Alexandria Fleming, teacher at Roland Park Elementary Middle School, is appointed Educational Specialist to Social Studies effective July 1st. Shanika Herndon, Educational Specialist 2. Transition is appointed Coordinator, Transition, effective July 1st. Courtney Hill, Special Education Liaison, is appointed Coordinator, Special Education Strategy, effective July 1st. Ifa Payne, teacher at Belmont Elementary School, is appointed Educational Specialist to Gifted and Advanced Learning, effective July 1st. Jason Peenert, Educational Associate, is appointed MTSS Liaison, effective July 1st. Tina Ruiz, Educational Associate ESOL at John Rura Elementary Middle School, is appointed Educational Specialist 2 for ESOL, effective July 1st. Corey Debnam, teacher at Paul Lawrence Dunbar High School, is appointed Assistant Principal at Pimlico Elementary Middle School, effective July 1st. Deshaun Frazier, Educational Associate at Dr. Bernard Harris Senior Elementary School, is appointed Assistant Principal at Hamden Elementary Middle School, effective July 1st. Iris Lewis, IEP Team Associate at Highland Town Elementary Middle School, is appointed Assistant Principal at Highland Town, effective July 1st. That's Highland Town 215. Neal Ladston, teacher at Kip Harmony, is appointed Assistant Principal at Kip Harmony, effective July 1st. Douglas Fireside, interim principal at New Song Academy, is appointed Principal, New Song Academy, effective July 1st. Yasmin Thomas, teacher at Graceland O'Donnell Heights Elementary Middle School, is appointed Assistant Principal at Arlington Elementary Middle School, effective July 1st. Charlotte Voss, principal resident at Lakeland Elementary Middle School, is appointed Principal at Windsor Hills Elementary Middle School, effective July 1st. Bridget Cotman, Assistant Principal at Violetville Elementary Middle School, is reassigned Assistant Principal at Fort Worthington, effective July 1st. Betsaray Johnson, Assistant Principal at Curtis Bay Elementary Middle School, is reassigned Assistant Principal at Yorkwood Elementary School, effective July 1st. Yvette Lynch, Assistant Principal at Dr. Nathan A. Pitts Ashburton Elementary Middle School, is reassigned Assistant Principal at Fallstaff Elementary Middle School, effective July 1st. And Dwight Freeman, who was appointed Principal in April, effective July 1st, is assigned as Principal at Liberty Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Skinner. Just a few additional points for each of our current or newly appointed principals, just briefly. Doug Fireside returned to city schools this year as interim principal at New Song, and we just heard that he will continue with tonight's appointment as the permanent principal. Mr. Fireside worked as a teacher, academic coach, and director of instruction with, with city schools for 20 years, leaving in 2014, and then returning after his work with school turnaround and educator improvement projects across the country. Mr. Fireside has degrees from UNC Greensboro and Johns Hopkins University. He is a resident of Baltimore City and is proud to have sent his three children to city schools. Principal Charlotte Voss is a career educator who has served the students, families, communities, and stakeholders of Baltimore City Public Schools for the past 18 years. As we heard, she currently serves as the president, excuse me, as the principal resident at Lakeland Elementary Middle. She has also been an assistant principal, staff developer, CEO Teacher Fellow, and she has taught students from grades kindergarten through 12. She holds degrees from Morgan State University, University of Notre Dame, Maryland, and we want to congratulate her as the new principal at Windsor Hills Elementary School. And then finally, Principal Dwight Freeman, who was appointed in April, will now be serving as the principal of Liberty Elementary School. Mr. Freeman began his career as a middle-grade science teacher in previously, in Baltimore City Public Schools, and previously taught at Guilford Elementary Middle School. He is returning from Washington, DC, where he served as an Assistant Principal, Dean of Students, and Instructional Coach. He holds degrees from Alabama State University, Auburn University, Montgomery, and Coppin State University. Congratulations to all of our newly appointed principals. Next, within my remarks, I would like to take some time this evening, and I'm going to invite Dr. Jenny Wu to load the brief PowerPoint this morning. I wanted to make sure that we were able to give, that I was able to give the community an update on where we are with regards to our planning for the upcoming school year. I think we heard from some of I think we heard from some of the public comment this evening, notably from both our BTU partners as well as partners within the Teacher Democracy Part, excuse me, Baltimore Teacher Democracy Project, that we really do have a great deal of work in terms of the education recovery planning that we are facing now and we are engaged in. I just want to also let folks know, we'll get started quickly because I do know we're trying to get to graduation, that the education recovery plan, I think it's important for the public and the board to know, we have kind of four key components of the planning that we have begun and that we will be continuing. You'll see them here. Clearly, first and foremost is maintaining health and safety for all. Second, making sure that we support all stakeholders and adapting to the new reality. That includes students, teachers, staff, families, accelerating student learning, and ensuring that we have the appropriate operational support. So instructional technology, food, finance, transportation, and facilities are just some of those. Also want to give the community a sense and the board a sense of the three phases of this planning. I think we heard some reference to this this evening, again, from our colleagues with the Teacher Democracy Project. And we really are working on three phases. You'll see a number of the national reports and consortia that we have been a part of. Not all are represented here. And some of the studies that we are consulting, as well as our own State Maryland Together Plan, which does provide additional guidance. You'll see the three phases represented here. One that would be fully remote learning in the event that there are either families or conditions that will continue to require full remote learning. Phase two is a hybrid model, as was described earlier today. We too have adopted a hybrid model for planning as well, which includes choices and being able to toggle between both in-person as well as virtual learning. And then phase three, while it's noted, a new normal, that would be, I think, correspond more clearly to in-person, what full in-person teaching and learning and school will look like. These are some of the same slides, by the way, that we have used in some of our early engagement of principals, small groups of teachers, and that we are also using to base our work with parents. You'll see in the next slide, some of the, as we get going, some of our focus really now is on stakeholder engagement. And so we want to invite all parents, all families, stakeholders to take part in some of the activities that you'll see that we have planned here. You'll see in terms of the who, as noted this evening, we do appreciate the work clearly of our school leaders, who we have already begun some of this work with, teachers and staff, both at Central as well as classroom teachers who have been involved and will continue to be involved. You'll see families and students. So not only will we have very quick surveys that will go out and we'll show you a little bit. We're trying to make sure and aligning that that feedback is both customized and similar across stakeholder groups. You'll see our union partners. I had the chance to touch base with our union leaders this past week to make sure that we are in effect, making sure that we're getting their best thinking and thoughts as well. And you'll see a number of partners, including the board itself. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners for using a good portion of their committee meetings to also provide feedback and thoughtful questions to staff, as well as some of our elected officials. You'll see that the topics here that we'll have feedback on include everything from distance learning, as well as feedback on our reopening models that will correspond to the three phases that we rolled out previously. You'll see some of the how for the public. Please be aware, we'll also be reaching out very directly and purposefully to frankly, families who we have not been able to hear from for a variety of reasons. Most notably, those that have been most seriously impacted by the current health crisis. So we will be doing that, but you'll also see the number of ways that families can get involved. And people should begin looking, beginning next week, for surveys, work groups, those kinds of things to begin. You will see the closing the distance. This is a nice overview of a lot of the detail that was on the previous slide. And this is a way we'll be making sure we get this out. Our communications team has been doing wonderful work on making sure that we can get out the communication to community, family, through our families, as well as through our community partners to make sure that we are canvassing across our city and a variety of stakeholder groups. And then one of the things, is that, is that it Jenny? Or are we going further? Okay. One of the things I wanted to make sure, just again, and these are, this will be posted because I know this is my comment, so it's going, you know, faster than we might normally. But I wanted to give the public and the board a sense of some of our sample poll questions. You see one here. And some of the ways that we are asking all stakeholders, whether it's teachers, principals, central office staff, or families, to actually reflect on some of the key elements that, so that we can get feedback. This is just one sample question. Next slide Jenny. You'll also see, this is just a quick example of some of the real-time feedback. We're using this with our planning team, with other, with other groups. We'll be using some of this with parents and some of our parent partners, as well as our union partners. And then some of what we're hearing already, in terms of what we've heard. You'll see here that some of these thoughts reflect a lot of what we've been hearing, both nationally, across the state, and just a sample of, in addition to just the numbers, the real thoughtfulness that our stakeholders, I mean, in this case, our principals gave. And then you'll see some initial thoughts of what we've begun. And we've only just begun hearing from teachers, but some of what we have heard from our small teacher groups with regard to some of what has been helpful for them, what they have found most concerning in terms of, you know, what it will take for them to want to re-enter school. And I think as some of our BTU partners referenced earlier, this is complex. And so we continue to appreciate all of the feedback. And you'll see here, some real just thoughtful responses already from educators. And then finally, the timeline of when folks will, can participate in the building, but also frankly, in the feedback. This is not kind of a one-time for feedback. It's not a one-time. We really want the continuum of the planning over the coming weeks to reflect this continual feedback. So thank you, Board Chair Chinia and the full Board of Commissioners for entertaining a more extended presentation. But I thought it was important, given where we are in June, to let the public know, to let our constituencies and our team know where we are with our stakeholder engagement. And many of these slides are some of the same information that we've been presenting to a variety of groups. Okay? Great, thank you very much Jenny. And then I just have two additional points that I will reference. And let me just pull that back up really quickly, shifting from platform to platform. And so with two final points, the first, I know that we continue to receive a number of questions about our school calendar. As we look ahead to the upcoming school year, much as I noted earlier, just now, remains unclear. We don't yet know the circumstances under which school will begin, whether our buildings will be allowed to open and to what degree. And not all of those decisions will be under our control, although, as just noted, we are planning for a variety of scenarios. But one thing is certain. School year 2021 will be critically important to our students' success. And we must do everything in our power to ensure that we are prepared to support their needs, no matter the educational environment in which we are providing instruction. As the calendar currently stands, our teachers are scheduled to work for six days after students are released until Tuesday, June 23rd. We have heard from BTU and from many individual teachers that this would not be fully productive. That they are understandably tired from their exertions on behalf of their students over the past several months and in need of rest to refresh themselves for the year ahead. I have nothing but admiration for the way our teachers stepped up to the challenges of distance learning and the numerous disruptions caused by COVID-19. And I understand the physical and emotional toll this period has taken on every member of the City Schools team, both particularly with the most recent uprising across the country and the world. With that in mind, we developed proposals for repurposing those six days and reallocating that time to the fall, when we will have information we need to use those hours most effectively. Other districts have found solutions in similar situations, including compromises wherein some workdays were shifted to next year or summer, and some workdays were reduced. Originally, we believed that the strongest option would be to extend our instructional time in the fall. We know that many of our students, and particularly a significant number of our Black and Brown students, which continues to be borne out in national discussions and research analysis, will need every minute of instruction we can provide to make up for the disproportional learning time they lost due to inequitable access to broadband and internet technology. I still believe that is the most effective option. After we were informed by the BTU leadership that extended learning time for students did not seem to be a viable option, we developed proposals for reallocating those workdays to professional learning across a range of options, including the addition of prep time in August, additional team planning time, or summer learning sessions that staff could complete on their own schedule, including sessions on virtual instruction and social emotional learning in a virtual environment. Just yesterday, the board received an email from an elementary teacher stating, quote, "It seems to me that the system does not yet know what school will look like next September. It needs all the time it can, as the conditions may change." As teachers may need extensive training, the logical solution would be for the system to let teachers out one week early this summer and come back one week early this August, when more information is available to the district. We agree with that teacher sentiment. However, we were unable to reach agreement with union partners, which is necessary to shift workday requirements from June to some later dates. So here is where we stand. While we will do our best to provide meaningful professional development to teachers between June 16th and 23rd, we should not fool ourselves into thinking that such professional learning will be nearly as effective as what we could be provided prior to school start, both because of the time lag between any learning opportunities we offer now and the start of the next year, and because learning opportunities in August could be tailored to the specific environments in which teachers will find themselves when school reopens. What bothers me most, and what should bother anyone who cares about the well-being of our young people, is that time is the resource we can least afford to waste. A single day of lost professional learning time comes at a financial cost of over $2 million. However, the real cost, the lost time, is incalculable in terms of the impact on student learning, particularly on our most vulnerable students, whose academic progression has already been greatly disrupted through no fault of their own. We stand ready to meet with union leadership in good faith this week. And I will provide the board with an update on staff workdays if anything changes. Thank you. Finally, I would like to invite everyone to join us at 6:00 PM, immediately following tonight's board meeting at a district-wide virtual celebration for graduating seniors. The ceremony can be viewed on City Schools Facebook page and the YouTube channel, and it will also be recorded and available on the district website. Please join us in honoring the accomplishments of the class of 2020. Individual high school graduations will be held virtually starting tomorrow through June 18th. Thank you very much. See our website for a list of the dates and times for every graduation. This concludes my comments for this evening, Chair Chinia.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. And I'm hopeful that we will be able to come up with the best plan so that we can be ready as a priority for the recovery is to help each of our students, our families, and our staff. So I'm looking forward to some progress this week. Would you like to introduce our new Chief Financial Officer for the next informational item?
I absolutely would. Thank you, Chair Chinia. And I will first start by saying again, a big public thank you to the Deputy Chief Financial Officer, Mary Ann Cox, for just her unwavering commitment to make sure that we were steady in this transition. She did a fabulous job. And with that, it is also my pleasure that we have transitioned to our full-time Chief Financial Officer and absolutely thrilled to introduce Chris Doherty, who will lead the next portion of this meeting. We are all breathing a little easier, I think, including Deputy Chief Cox. I think the opposite might be true for our new Chief Doherty, who has hit the ground running and has plunged into the deep end of the finance pool. So Chris, we're thrilled to have you on board, and it's my pleasure to turn it over to you.
I think you're on mute, Chris.
On mute, Chris.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'm afraid I'm having some technical issues. I know time is tight. Madam Chair Chinia, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Santalisis. I just want to introduce myself. I'm in my second week. And for the purposes of speed and clarity, Mary Ann Cox is going to walk through these slides. But they represent our best current projections of what the end of the year funds will be in this very special and difficult year. So I'm hearing an echo. I will go back on mute. Thank you for letting me say hello, and I'm very happy to be on the team.
Welcome aboard.
Good evening. This is Mary Ann Cox, Deputy Chief Financial Officer. I'm going to walk us through the presentation for the FY 2020 general fund projections, including revenue expenditures and encumbrances and where we think we'll be at the end of the year. Please note that this is a projection. This is not an absolute, and it is likely in the middle of a range. We can have pluses and minuses on just about every line item here, and I'll just highlight some of the larger ones. Joe, if you'll go to the revenue. Okay. As you can see here, the final funding budget ended up at 1.175 billion. It increased 13 million from the original budget, primarily due to the Maryland teacher, you know, the teacher grant that we got and additional money from MSA and the City of Baltimore. So you can see that we are right in line for the Maryland state revenue funding in the City of Baltimore. Federal sources is down some. Federal sources is down some, E-Rate revenue is down, and the Treasury supplement is down yet. We are still waiting on getting that money. And also, we have ROTC and Impact Aid, but those numbers are much smaller. The interest earnings, again, are higher than expected, you know, certainly than budget. It would be our expectation that this number would go down next year. We have transferred money over to the Capital Projects Fund from the general fund balance in excess of $30 million, and the Capital Projects Fund will spend that money. That was for like air conditioning and FFE, and for Halliburton, Graceland, and, you know, other capital-type projects. Other revenue is a little bit lower. Again, we had, that includes things like for MSA, cell phone towers, non-resident tuition, summer school, and intestate income that the city gets, that City Schools gets. Other financing sources is exactly what you would expect it to be. That would be money pulled from fund balance to help balance the budget, and we are projecting $15.3 million for that next year. In terms of the expenditures, you can see that there is a, there's a favorable variance of not quite $23 million for salary and wages, and as you would expect, related about $7 million in fringe benefits for that. The other variances are not as significant, utilities and other charges, there's some there, you know, travel's down certainly with our shutdown of the schools, and travel was canceled, and I think our utilities came in line with what we were expecting. The negative variance there for transfers is a lot of different things, but it's primarily related to the enrollment adjustment that was processed in the second quarter. So to go to the next one, and I'm sorry, I'm mindful that there's another event that's coming up right behind this. For the next one, our funding budget ended up being $1.75 billion for revenue and expenditures, and you can see that the projected revenues were a little bit higher by like $4 million for revenue, and the projected expenditures and encumbrances came in under budget. Now, as I noted, we have $15.3 million that we have to put aside in a signed fund balance to use for the FY 2021 budget as an other financing source. And also, as is the custom, City Schools' general fund funds the deficit of the food services operation. This year, as you can see, it's significantly larger than normal, primarily due to the COVID-19 response. So we lost revenue, we're serving certainly no more than 10% of our average meals, and we also have some additional costs, so that number would be included there. And then we have an estimated potential amount available from the general fund after those other items are considered, of approximately $7.7 million. And we may yet purchase other items here before we close our books. So are there any questions?
I'd like to say thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and welcome again, Mr. Doherty. Good to have you onboard, and I know, just a reminder to folks that we will also be presenting some of our information at the city council hearing that's coming up around the budget. Just a reminder to folks that immediately followed.
Chair Chinna, this is Commissioner Brooks. So in addition to the funding, can we also start, it would also be helpful to examine our own demographics in terms of our staff, particularly at the leadership level, around race, ethnicity? I think that's going to be important for me, as I think about sort of how we not only recruit our teachers, but also recruit our high leadership and cabinet-level recruits.
I'm not, I'm not, are you asking for a review? I'm not, I just want to be clear.
I'm asking for, one, the process, but then, two, a breakdown of our demographics of the district, high-level leadership, in terms of their race and ethnicity.
Commissioner Brooks, this is Board Executive Gant. I believe that was in Teaching and Learning, there was a presentation that had that data, so I'll share that with you after the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else related to the, to the, to the last informational item? If not, I'm gonna move on, just reminding folks that there will be a district-wide graduation celebration for our graduating seniors. You can watch this on our Facebook or YouTube channel. I'm hoping that folks will tune in. There's a listing on our website of the upcoming meetings for both the committees as well as the board, and again, I will invite folks to please take a look at that. If there are no other items, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Reed. So moved.
Seconded, James.
Thank you, James. Is there anyone who is opposed to the adjournment? If not, the meeting is adjourned, and I invite you all to join us for the citywide graduation. Thank you so much, and thank you for your flexibility in allowing us to make some adjustments in time. Good evening, everyone, and stay safe.
Thank you, everybody.